Here.
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 Me too.
Who more than that?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second, motion for a minute.
Paul is favoring. Aye.
Aye. Chamber of Commerce, Judy.
If I could have my board members that are here come up with me. Thank you so much for time this evening during your meeting. We've tried to do this a few times and wanted to do it in 2014, so it was round on the 10-year mark, but we missed it, but that's okay. We wanted to present to the City of Ava, the Board of Aldermen, the Mayor, a plaque of appreciation for the City of Ava's support of the chamber for the last 10 years. We thank you for partnering with us, for financially supporting us. We thank you for seeing value in what we do and what we bring to the City of Ava. So we wanted to present this to all of you this evening on behalf of the Ava Chamber of Commerce. We thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very much, and we'd like to-
And Richard was a part of that?
Richard was a part of that, yes.
I worked as a declining bolt.
You guys can talk about that later. I don't know anything about that, so-
Judy, if we could, could you guys-
Yes, if we could, that'd be great.
Please.
Can we fit everyone in together? You don't want your picture taken. Well, we can post it down the post office. We just get this way a little bit? Should I go that way?
You guys are making it.
You're standing?
Yeah.
Can't get the mayor over the head with it. Pretty bad. That's bad.
Okay, David, you're not in.
What do you want me to do with this? All right, perfect. That'll work. Are we all in?
Yes. It's really fuzzy. My camera must be cold. Sorry. All right, everybody smile.
I bet she gets top of gym shoes.
Did he keep her?
Let me take one more. It's just really cold. Sorry. All right, everybody smile.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Jim, please.
Gentlemen, ladies, I'm Casey Blau, I'm the president of Sistro Steel Panels, and we are, you should have a packet with you that explains a little bit about who we are. We are looking to begin manufacturing our steel, our prefabricated steel panels here in Ava using a part of the old Rawlings building. And that's what we are here to discuss tonight.
Do you have anything to add, Jim?
I could never do any better than what I can. But if you guys have any questions, we're both here to field any questions you guys have.
Oh, we're glad to have you.
Well, we've got a couple of issues with the dock door, and seeing if we can get the dock doors from Emerson, but we're trying, you know, Janice's group's been trying to help us get that squared away. We're hoping that that's not a deal breaker.
I, Ed Underman, is that right?
Yes, Youngman.
Youngman?
Yeah, Youngman.
He did call me today.
Oh, good.
Returned the call, and anyway, there, he's taking it on up higher. He's, I thought he was like a plant manager or something, but he's kind of like the bricks and mortar type person for the company. And then after I visited with him, I called Phil, and it seemed like it might be a good idea to possibly call the plant manager and maybe visit with him, which would-
And we'd be more than happy if you wanted us to go with you. I don't have any problem with that.
They didn't say no.
Well-
That's a good start.
That's a good start.
To meet with who early, with Phil or Phil and James or- Well, probably James. Yeah. I think that's who we probably need to contact. I contacted Phil today, and he kind of let, let it like, you know, be better off talking to the plant manager. So, and I'm assuming he met James, which is the plant manager over here. And we just need to, this happened, Ed called me about noon, and then I, Phil this afternoon, and that's what we're at on that. But we do need to make contact with the plant manager over here and see what we can probably work out, so.
Yeah, I did not realize, I thought they weren't using any of the dock doors, but when we went and looked yesterday, they are having their FedEx deliveries.
Yeah, they're using three and four. It's one and two we're looking at.
Right.
And that's what I thought, too, and I was out there one day and watched this guy start backing up, and I said, "Where are you going?" And he said, "Well, you know, this is where they started loading and unloading it." And there's some proprietary stuff there, and evidently, you open the docks on the other side, and you can see in, cold air goes all back in there. And they've got the docks kind of blocked off so that you wouldn't be able to see back in the plant. The docks one and two, they're not using, but three and four, you can tell they've got new doors on them.
Well, if they're concerned, if we did get the first two, and that man door, we'd probably have to figure out a way to get them a man door so that we're not going in where they are. But I'm assuming if they're not using those other doors, we could probably convert one of those doors into a man door.
We would have, if they agreed to let us use the dock doors, we'd have to do whatever they wanted us to do to block them off. You know, they're real protective.
There's no problem with that, I believe.
Don't want anybody to see what they're doing.
We probably understand that, we have a little proprietary information as well.
Yeah, that, I think the first two, the first two doors to the east kind of line up with office spaces just inside the- Behind it. Yeah, straight behind it. And I did visit, mentioned to Ed, I said, you know, that if we could get those two dock doors, that we could put up a, you know, a wall to-
Absolutely.
Keep it private.
Sure, I mean-
But you're right about, they would have to have a door to get into.
Right.
Their drivers would be able to get in. Yeah. That's their only way in, the driver's in.
But that would, if we can get one and two, then that facilitates anything that we need. That would be, that would be a real coup.
Anytime tomorrow, we're thirsty, I've got both days off. If somebody goes, I'd be glad to go back. I could possibly tomorrow afternoon, but that would be as soon as the act. Thursday, I couldn't, Thursday, Friday, I know I couldn't.
And maybe more than-
I'd be able to go either day. If they want to meet, and I won't be able to. I'm supposed to work in the- If you want, if the board wants me to, I'll make a call to James and try to set up something tomorrow afternoon.
Okay.
So, fine. I'll try to, I'll try to set something up tomorrow afternoon, and then-
If you need us to go with you to talk something, we'd be more than happy. Or, we're not trying to step on anybody's toes, but-
Understood, yeah.
Just let us know.
Okay.
Okay.
And I feel that you're not bringing-
Okay, thank you. I mean, if that's the only question, we're waiting on one other thing to fall, on some equipment orders, and we would be ready to go if that worked out. And the only other thing would be a man door down by our office, so.
We were talking about that, thinking about your ADA ramp. We're gonna have to start over at Curtis Department Store. Is there any way that the side door could be used for ADA ramp or entrance?
The man door for the, for, there's no way you'd get that, because you've got the water, the sprinkling system that would block you from being able to do anything with that.
No, I'm at, on the front. On the front, you can, you can have, as long as, as long as you've got an ADA entrance to you, even if it goes through the front and back through there some way, I think, that would work well.
As long as you have a access-
Gotta be able to get the building, get over to see you in the office.
Right. The only thing that we, we would prefer not to have happen is for them to come through the front door, go right into the production facility.
Yeah.
We'd like to control that access. But if it's, if it's on the south, I think you're talking about on the south side?
Yes, true.
So if we came into the south side, went to the conference room, we could probably adjust something, but I don't think that's any better. I don't think your grade goes up high enough to support a lesson.
But I was thinking about the door that is already there. It's almost ground level, I don't know if that-
You mean where the police are?
It would be just to the, just to the west.
Just to the west?
Yeah.
Over by the jail portion, portion?
Yeah, I don't know, I haven't been over there, so I don't know.
I don't know if that'd create our customers, or what.
That could be a problem, us being in there now there with prisoners back there, too. They'd have an armed guard then.
We'd know if they were serious to come see us.
Well, I guess we need to attack the dock first, if we're met the ramp.
All right.
That's not a small issue.
Well, it's, maybe it was our mistake to pick the west side.
Thirty-one slope or something like that, I can't remember it.
Yeah, I-
It's one, it's one inch, three or four.
Two separate ADAs.
Or somewhere close to that. So, and that door's pretty high.
Unless the city's gonna wave on an ADA, and I don't know if you can.
I don't think we have that option.
Right.
If you've got an existing door, it's not ADA compliant, you can, you can get around that. But you've got to have some way to get before you get to the door.
Right. I don't think we want to put an elevator.
I don't think so.
Any more questions?
Are you, are you manufacturing these now, here locally?
We have one other facility that does manufacture them, but we will probably take over the sole manufacturing for the panels. The one is basically a test site, and we have done it, built some homes and shipped them to where we wanted them, but we've got some contracts that are coming up that will force us to expand pretty quickly before we can get up and running.
How many employees?
All right, you want me to talk?
Go right ahead.
Okay. We think we're just have five or six to start, but if we get the second and third contract, one of them would be for 300 homes, 300 homes a month that we would ship in C-containers, and they would fly them to where they're gonna be erected. So, our, our problem won't be the fact that we're gonna be five or six forever. It's just how do we grow? Because we have to bring in more proprietary equipment once we pass these thresholds. So, if we, if we're able to honor all three contracts that we have, we could have 30 or 40 people working there. And I mean, we would have to come back to you for more square footage.
Absolutely. We're gonna have to have more than two docks?
You know, we, we were, we were looking at that, and for doing 300 homes, we would have three containers coming in and out every day. So, that's, we don't see that as being a problem yet, but if the second, third contract, which we're just producing panels for and shipping the panels, we don't know how fast that'll grow. And if it grows what they say, they promised, one company wants 100,000 square feet a month. And if that works, then, then it would kind of get a little congested. But that would be a problem that we would like to have, and we could probably work on that. You know, the worst thing we can do is go plan for all three contracts being fully developed, and then only 40% of them pan out. So we'd like to grow into those contracts.
That's the great thing about that location, there's a lot of room to grow over there.
Right. Yeah, it would just really hurt my feelings if I came back for all 90,000 square feet.
It'd really hurt ours, let me think. Reggie, Reggie would have to put up shop out in the yard.
I mean, I, those are questions, those would be a lot of fun questions to have.
Yeah.
The only thing, the only thing that scared me is when Janice gave me the lease on it, it said the roof, and I'm a little concerned, I mean, because we would be responsible for our portion of the roof repair. Hopefully the roof's not on the last 25 days, and we gotta come in and then all of a sudden have a new roof on it. Do we know?
That's, that's negotiable also, considering, you know, putting a limit on how, what percentage you will ever be responsible for.
I was just afraid I'd have to take more tile and all.
Did we talk about that? Did we talk about that?
She brought in the last one, that we would be responsible, and I just don't know how old, how old the roof is, that's one concern. Because I understand that most leases, you are gonna be responsible for it.
So, two dock doors is-
Two dock doors should work for us for at least the two contracts. If we're bringing the third one on, it's a, it's a building company, it's a, it's like a lumberyard that would want our panels, right?
Yeah.
To support the, you know, to put these in, in strategic areas to make the homes more stable. And if we get, we just don't know how fast that one's gonna grow. I mean, that could go in real quick, then we'd be coming back and looking for more and more units to produce product.
You, on the lease agreement, if you want to wait until we know for sure about those docks, because that will, that will change the agreement.
Absolutely. Putting them in where we had to talk about yesterday is a real killer for us. We really want to be here, we want to work with it, and if we can't get those dock doors, and it doesn't look like we'll ever get those dock doors, we'll work around it, but we may actually have to come back for more square footage because it really screws up our footprint. I'm sorry, I said screw. That's what it is.
Has, has dock doors on the front side of the building been explored?
Oh, no. It hasn't, we hadn't talked about, that's where the office and the conference room and everything's gonna be, just basically on what the structure is right now.
Well, it could be, you know, it's a body now or something. It was cut out and retaining wall put in, I mean, that might be something to look at.
I'm trying to make this as equitable or cheap for all of us, but that would probably work, we just reconfigure the whole design on what we want them to do.
I know at one time, early on the east end down there, that they looked at, opened that up, putting bigger doors, like overhead doors in on the end, but I know it wouldn't be probably feasible for docks, but, you know, bigger door, I don't know how you guys load your trucks or how you're gonna do that, but at one time they looked at that, on the east end. And then it was all, all down in it.
We, we'll be getting C-containers, and all of ours will be coming off the docks. We can't, we can't go walk out.
Are you talking about like the 45-foot containers or the 27-foot?
Well, starting for some of our shipments, they would be going in 20-foot C-containers, which wouldn't be a problem, putting them on the front, on the south side. But the, the side door, it's not the docks themselves that are a problem on the side door, it's the location on that west wall that's really the problem.
And also, it's only gonna be a 13-foot door.
Right, we can live with that. Our, our, we, and I hate to get into all the details of what we're doing, but the panels that we're producing, that can get up to 20 feet, and I was talking with the gentleman, 13, it limits us a little bit, but it's something that we can get through, you know, we can work that out. So, we don't want that to be a showstopper, but, you know how that goes.
We could possibly look at the front even, and, you know, if, if other doors don't work out.
We've been waiting, it's been about a month, we've been trying to get this figured out. If we can get a decision, you know, a quick no probably helps us go back and make other decisions. We're all kind of hoping that the first two will work, and, because it really, the process flow for our footprint allows us to have that back area by the restrooms as our finished goods inventory, just being staged there to load into containers. It is kind of, the flow is right, because we just make a horseshoe, it's coming around, and then store it out there. We just have to change everything if we decided to come on that south end and have the doors.
I need to get in the building and familiarize myself, and I'm kind of embarrassed because I don't know how it lays.
It's, they've got, basically, the, we're taking the old, what was it?
Molding?
Uh-huh.
Molding?
Yeah, the old molding area, it's got a big cinder block wall on the east side of it. It stops you from having to put on a new firewall. We did that, it just isn't enough for us to have our production and storage, and so we had to come out the side and take off some in the back so that we could store the finished good product.
The front was gonna be all office and conference room.
Right, and we might want to come back, because we think we're getting some indications that we'll need to have a showroom to put up some displays of our product, the different aspects of our product. So we may have to come for another couple thousand square feet to see if we can build us a showroom.
We'll find out after dock.
Yeah.
As soon as we can.
Excellent. Thank you.
I apologize for nothing. I didn't get a call back until I put, I put calls in last week.
I know, we've all been waiting on it. Appreciate any help we can do.
I don't know for sure what happened, but today noon, I got a call.
Maybe good things are coming.
They didn't say no.
Okay. Any other questions you might have for us?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the agenda.
You're welcome to stay, our meetings are exciting.
That's what I was told, we were kind of looking for.
A motion to approve the agenda. Second?
I'll take it.
Pool repair bed, it looks like we just have the one. Table before.
Do you remember what that was? Did you guys hear? In dollar money, I heard it. Yeah. I'll call my girlfriend. Oh, I got one last thing, but I don't know. That was a 5,380,000. I don't know where, I guess Peggy.
Yeah. Isn't a question?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, are you asking if they have 80,000, is that the question? No. No, we have, that's what I was looking at here, we have 30,000 in the, in their savings account. This is all we have.
How many times have we painted that out? Of course, that's not fair to Kurt, because he hasn't been here.
I don't believe it's ever been painted.
I don't believe it has, yeah. It's never been painted?
I think that's still the original paint, that's the reason for the high cost now. It has to be sandblasted.
I suppose we might be able to get by one more year by painting it, I don't know. We don't have the money to do it, so. But it doesn't sound like we do.
No.
Well, the question is, without doing that, are we gonna be able, the pool comes spring? Guess would be a good question. It shouldn't, if we, if we're just gonna paint it, it shouldn't, shouldn't be able to do that, I suppose.
A temporary paint job.
Yeah.
Not something so permanent as the epoxy.
Speak up, Kurt.
Sorry, something not as permanent as the epoxy, to make it presentable.
Yeah, they make just a regular, just a regular pool paint that's not expensive, it's epoxy.
Something that, it may last a season, but-
Yeah. We have done that several times at the country club, and gotten by, and it's just a bandage. We've got enough to do the patch. Yeah. Is that what we're looking at, doing patching and painting as best we can?
Did we figure out how much that was?
I just, I don't have any idea about what it costs to paint, just painted.
To just paint it, that, I don't know.
It's bottom patch, or?
Bottom patches, 5,000, 6,000.
Yeah, it's 6,000, almost.
And that, I believe, is 24,000? It ain't gonna cost us 24,000 to paint it. I can't imagine it would. I wouldn't expect it would. I would recommend we see what we can just get painted for, with not, not using an epoxy paint and try to get by another year or two. And patching it and then trying to paint it with- If we, you know, I, I don't know, is a patch something we need to do now, you think?
I think at this point, we might be able to do epoxy and do it as a temporary repair.
And then, and then try at a later date to fix all the-
Try at a later date, once we get the funds to, do the epoxy paint, do a full repair at that point.
Do you recommend, I mean, that's what I would recommend doing, since we don't have the money to do it with right now. Just see what we can just, cheaper, cheaper variant paint, this something besides the epoxy. I, yeah, I think we could probably get by another year, at least a year, maybe two. If that's a motion, I'll save it. I'll, I'll make that motion that we move that way and try to, try to get by another year or two before we-
Paul is favoring?
I would be in favor of that. Aye.
I have sent you financial reports, and about the same as they've been the last couple of months. We're holding steady at 1.8 million in the overall cash and cash equivalents. Water fund, struggling a little bit there, and the cash fund. They do have money in their savings to pay their bills, but, and overall, if you look at the revenue and expense reports, the revenues are staying fairly steady, not increasing significantly, but we're trying to hold back on expenses. But some of the big items, I know, like the paving project over here, has not been done, so that's not in these, you know, it hasn't been expended yet, so there's still some, some big figures to come. And then, we also had the auditor recommendations letter that I mean, we needed a little advice on a couple of the items, what to do. I think three of the items was just basic GASP regulations, and we already had knowledge on those. But the first one had to do with the bond covenant. We're not meeting their principal and interest of 110% requirement. We're paying our bill, I mean, it's not that we're not making our bond payment, it's just that there's an expectation on the bond covenant that we bring in enough revenues to have 110% of our principal and interest payment. And according to the auditors, we had a deficit of 274,000 on that this past year. And just curious, we, we did, I think I forwarded you a couple of emails, as we have to send those audits out each year to our bond, bonding and lending agencies. I did get some emails back, expressed some concern about that particular requirement, and wanting to know how we were going to proceed with that. So that was the question, I was just putting the foregents tonight on-
This isn't the first year we've been below those, is it, Peggy?
No, it's not. And we had a second recommendation that had to do with our reserves. And when I've done financial reports for you, we've talked about reserves in the past. We don't have any actually designated as reserves. We have our savings accounts, and we put monies back, but I've never been given direction by the board that that's actual reserves, because if they're actual reserves, then we can't touch them. We have to set them back, and they can't be included in transfers, and so. And so for analysis, he had some recommendations. And a lot of the reason why we didn't increase the rates as high as he recommended was the idea that maybe we could do a lot of stuff in-house and keep some of the expenses down. Still hard to do with all the D and R regulations and we've had to do smoke testing. You have equipment and all that. I think bottom line is that there just needs to be more revenue. And how, if you take that bond, one figure that we were looking at today, we had a deficit last year of two hundred and seventy four thousand five hundred and forty four dollars. And I looked to see how many water customers we have. Well, if you take that number and divide it by, I believe it was thirteen hundred, Janice right out.
Thirteen nine.
Thirteen nine, I think. That adds up to sixteen dollars and forty five cents a month per customer. It's a pretty significant amount.
However, last year it was two hundred and seventy four thousand. You said the year before it wasn't nearly.
I don't think it was nearly that much, but.
So the actual number we may be looking at may not, it may be somewhat less than.
Yeah, and that's what always concerns me is because I really don't know what expenses will come in and how that number will fluctuate. I know Janice and I were trying to look back to see what Carl Brown recommended and maybe just looking back at that.
So if we're looking at a rate increase, we could look at maybe an average of the two years.
Right.
And instead of a sixteen dollar a month rate increase.
Maybe do an eight.
Maybe half that.
Yeah, do it at an eight. Because I think right now the base rate is eleven dollars and sixteen cents, I think. And then you get it per thousand dollar, per thousand gallons, you get a dollar eighty two feet, I think. So that's how it's kind of calculated. If you look at raising that base up, maybe that eight dollars or something, then that might, you know. And then work on making sure, we've talked about the metering system. Making sure that the meters are accurate, that we're actually, you know, reading them correctly and getting it billed out so that we're bringing in all of the revenue based off of what we've pumped because it's, it can be significant.
But the bottom line is, we are going to have to seriously look at rate increases in order to honor that bond covenant that we made and therefore maintain our credit rating.
I think the concern, I don't think the bonding company is concerned that we're not making our payments because we are. You know, but they're concerned that we're not bringing in enough revenues to possibly build reserves to guarantee payment down the road. And then if you have to go out and get a loan in the future for a project, those lending agencies are going to look at your audits and say, well, you've got a recommendation there that you're not meeting. So we consider you high risk. So that's just down the road things that can happen.
Does all of the reserve that you have in the department have to come from revenue charged through that department? In other words, if you picked up revenue somewhere else or you take money somewhere else, can you apply that?
To another department? No, your funds, your user fees are supposed to maintain that fund when you get into enterprise funds. Yeah, yeah. And then your tax monies have to stay within those tax funds. So, yeah, I think. I think the answer is.
I know about taking it out. I'm talking about putting it in.
It's the way I understand, they're individual businesses, right?
They are. We can't, we can't take from restricted funds.
Right, yeah.
Supplement another fund.
You shouldn't, you know, we do, we do electric.
But we do it all the time.
We do transfers to general fund and that is.
I mean, everything we do supplemented out of electric fund. But that's not enterprise fund.
Yeah, primarily it goes to general. It doesn't, only in the last two years has money's been put over into the water fund. And I think that's where some of the is coming from. It's one thing to transfer to general, it's another to transfer to another enterprise fund. And even within general, you're not supposed to be going over like ten percent. And that's where last year we went to twelve and they were voicing concern. So it's, you know, numbers that we can look at, I can, we can put together whatever we want. But we're definitely, as Janice and I were looking at that big manual, they were not rate analysis people. But, you know, we can look at what Carl Brown recommended and look at those numbers, however you want to look at them. But I would like, you know, especially on the, like the interfund loan, if you have some thought on how to proceed on that just so we have something written for the auditors to just satisfy that recommendation of how do you want to pursue on that. And we don't have to do it.
I have a suggestion about that. Once you, normally what happens in this process in the past has been that you and Eddie would sit down and you'd come to some idea about how something ought to be solved and then present that to us for discussion. Because I, as for council members, we're, we're not really in a position to look at that stuff like that. But normally the treasurer and the mayor look at it and come up with solutions and then present that to us. And then, then we can kind of.
Well, that.
Look at it.
Peggy and I did talk about a solution.
That's the way that, in the past it's been done.
Peggy made some recommendations on that and we talked about her three recommendations. And the last one was the one that we thought might be favorable, which might be able, might be able to present that tonight. Was look at the fiscal year seventeen, two thousand seventeen budget after the AIDC loan is paid. And if we want to make that three-year payment starting seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, then it would be fifty one thousand. However, the last payment on that loan is two thousand twenty-three, which would give us six years. So starting with the fiscal year seventeen budget, the AIDC loan will be paid. We could pay twenty five thousand a year.
For six years.
Six years and have that paid off in two thousand twenty-three, which would be a plan. And that would get the auditors off of our back as far as the bonded.
That's that memo that I sent. Yeah, I sent that out the first of December before the auditors came. And then I attached, I attached it to this last batch of reports.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
That looks like it would be a good solution.
That's half of the loan, half of the pay. Right? Twenty-five is just.
Yeah, half of the, well, the total was a hundred and something, I don't.
Yeah, but our payment is fifty thousand.
Well, that was just, yeah, I mean, how about the interfund loan? Well, that would be, if we paid it out over three years, it'd be fifty thousand. But, and that's the first thing we talked about. But then Keith was saying, you know, maybe we could stretch it out a little further and just do twenty five thousand. And I said, that would be fine because that would take us up to the.
I'm saying as long as we do that, we won't, we won't catch any flak.
Right, we just, yeah, we just need something written.
So wait, well, two years on that, right?
One reason I thought it would be better to do that over six years is we're looking at building projects coming up with the city hall. And if we, if we start two thousand seventeen and commit that full of fifty thousand and pay it off, you know, then. However, if we do it over six years, we're not committing that full fifty some thousand. And it would leave us some other room for our building project at the city hall.
And the auditors were fine, you know, because I asked them if they had it specifically. They said, no, you just need something in writing so that, you know, if you get questioned, especially on an interfund loan like that, how are you planning on paying it back, you've got something in writing to know how to do it, so.
Sounds like a reasonable plan to me.
Yeah, I'll see.
I thought it was something we had to, you know, nail.
No, no, because I thought that too when they first started talking about it. Now that was some of the discussions there and that memo is just that we could pay it out over time. And I'm, but I hadn't even thought about taking it down further. So that would work. I guess that's how you want to pursue on that.
Do we need to make a motion to do that?
Yes, yes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say it.
I'll say it.
And then on the reserves, that's something, I mean, we don't have to have a, I don't have to have an opinion tonight necessarily. But it's just, there's, like I've given you is the minimums, I haven't given you the payroll ones yet.
Would you give us the bare minimum, which would be three months payroll? And then we can start from there and see how far we are from that figure. And then that will give us a good goal to start working with the board.
And then on the bond covenant, that's what I was wanting was just some opinions as to how you want to try to deal with that. You know, I think we can, I can put together, however you want to put together the figures. And Janice is reviewing the Carl Brown recommendations to see how that would work. And then, you know, we just, it is hard whenever those numbers fluctuate like that to know exactly where to. Because I'm not a rate analysis person in that I can't necessarily project what always going to happen. I don't think anybody can. They may say they do, but.
He did a rate study for us in two thousand seven and then again in two thousand eleven. And he already had some figures, so the second one wasn't as complicated as the first one. But still, you know, the information that we get out of that study is only as good as the information that we give them. And so as far as our capital improvements plan or equipment replacement plans, to go out ten years, we don't, we're not used to doing.
Okay, and then the third thing I had was just a letter there from Summit, well, actually from the Public Service Commission, making us aware of a rate increase that they're going to be, Summit and Akas is going to be passing along to their customers. It says effective immediately and this notice from them, although I didn't get it on December twenty-fourth, but that's when the notice is noticed here. And we are in, considered the Rogersville Division. And that rate increase for City of Ava is twenty point zero four percent. And we do collect franchise fees off of that. And they project that that will bring the city nine thousand two hundred and thirty one dollars and forty eight cents more in revenue. But that will be, that is passed along to those customers. So just giving you that letter and they are required by state statute to let the city and counties know if they do a rate increase over seven percent. So that's why we're getting that notice.
They actually asked for a bigger increase than that. I don't know. I'm thinking they asked for maybe twenty-eight percent. And I think maybe it was averaged out where they did get that. Because some of the other cities were higher, I believe.
Right, yeah, I think the.
And I think it averaged out maybe possibly, but I think it was like twenty-eight percent they were asking for. Last spring.
Yeah, it looked like here one city, City of Lincoln, was going to get a thirty-six percent. And Coal Camp is going to get, so there's several that's going to get thirty-six percent increases. A couple of it's going to get twelve. Ava fell somewhere down in there at the twenty point.
I was thinking, you know, close to thirty percent that they were asking for. Normally they get it whenever they ask.
Hi, Janice.
I emailed out this copy of the contract, proposed contract with Jaskin, Hill, North Cross. As you can see, it's mercifully short, four pages instead of eighteen of the previous contract. And just a few things that I'll point out. You know, the interior design was not part of the basic services in the previous contract. And in this one, it is included responsibilities of those interior design. On the reimbursement for expenses, they're charging at one point ten. They're, they're adding ten percent to the reimbursable charges that they, that they will pass through to us as compared to twenty percent of the previous contract. I mean, this, if they would negotiate that down as well, if we wanted to try to do that, that's considerably better. And then with, with previous contract, if the construction wasn't completed in six months, there was going to be additional charges. This one has that paragraph, but it's eighteen months, which I feel comfortable with. Considerably more. What I'm used to seeing, you know, more standard kind of thing. So if everybody was comfortable with this contract, we'd have resolution for the next year. Are there any questions about it?
I haven't read it. I just got it, so.
And this, this amount is, is based on two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, that is unusual. They had a flat fee instead of percentage. And we talked about percentages before and it does kind of encourage them to increase the cost of the project, you know, as much as they can. This, this works out to about twelve percent if it's a two hundred thousand dollar project. I think I said that backwards. Twelve to fifteen percent depending on the cost of the project. So that's still, that's still higher than we've been seeing recently, but.
I don't have any idea what the project is going to cost. If the project cost a hundred and fifty thousand, then the fees would be high. I don't know, probably life and quality or do you have any idea?
Well, one of the things he said, and that's, that's what happens on small projects, I'm sure. Certain amount of cost involved, whether it's a hundred and fifty thousand or seven hundred and fifty thousand, there's a base cost. And so on small projects, it turns out to be a higher percentage of your project. I don't think there's any way to get around that.
My experience with construction work in the past, if you've got a good set of points, they'll save you money.
Very few, very few changes to, and I would, I would expect that on this size project. If you had a million and a half, you're going to have some changes. Where are we hiring an architect firm in the first place? Let me freshen my memory. Is this because we were in disagreement on how it was going to get laid out or?
Or we don't really know for sure what we want.
How are we, how are we going to, how are we going to do it? I mean, I kind of understand that we've got, we did a lot of in-house stuff and here we are trying to save money and stuff. But we, we don't have in-house people, Bill, who can do a lot of this stuff. Well, I mean, I mean, I understand that.
If we, if we let it out on bids, we're going to, we have to know what we want to proper.
That's what's required in architecture. Okay, I got. Well, and your prevailing wage is part of it.
Because we're government in, you know.
I don't know how the union's got that in. I don't know how they did that, but they did a good job.
I mean, the union, I understand that part of it.
This gives us, yeah, it's expensive and you look at that, that's thirty thousand dollars we wish we could save. But it's, it's, it's going to let us sit down and have a committee and meet with them and have some input on what we want. And once that's decided, then he can, they'll start putting costs and things together. And then they're going to figure out how, how little money we're going to have to do it. Talking about the budget.
That'll give us time to budget it and make it work.
Well, that's the rate we're going. It'll be in two different budget years.
Yeah, we've got eighteen months from when we sign the contract. That's a lot better than six. And then we got a cap on this, on the amount, I guess, unless we decide we want more than.
And that cap was.
Twenty-nine thousand.
They are going to provide a preliminary budget early on in the process and then it can be reworked if that budget is too long.
There's no way to know for sure until it's bid. There's no way to know for sure until it's bid. The last time, last time we did something like this, the bids weren't close to the
Well, there's no question about it, I think we need a set of plans to properly do the job, I mean, there's no question about that, so. Just say, give us, you know, we could go ahead with the resolution from the, the next meeting and we could all, I haven't read this all the way through and by then we can.
If you have any questions for them, I can call. Then I also emailed out the lease agreement for the wrongs, the limited gentleman, I think everybody's looked at it. Quick a little bit, but we're, we should have a resolution later on in the meeting if, if there's any more discussion on it.
Do we not need to wait until I know about the dock and all of that extra area?
Well, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to actually sign it.
You wouldn't know what your costs are until we know?
Right, right. I'll need, I'll need you all's address for this too, I'll change that in there. Do we want to hold up on that resolution? And then finally, I just have the LED street lighting project, we received a little bit of paperwork on that. All things assigned.
Did you notice that we do have one brand new one right here? Yeah, it's been out and I have, we have one new LED light on that project.
So we have a resolution.
That's great. I mentioned to you earlier, in, in the beginning, this lighting thing was eight hundred bulbs and two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And that, and I, I don't object to it, but I see that it's ninety and it's two hundred and fifty bulbs.
That was an early estimate with the, by the electric department on the number of vol, on the number of volts that we have in the city and then a complete, you know, guess on the cost. So in consultation with the electric department, they wanted to, to change out the high wattage
Okay, just didn't know about it.
So this ninety thousand will get the high wattage bulbs?
Ninety thousand, that's all the two hundred and fifty watts.
Does not do any of the streetlights, regular streetlights. If I, if I read that right, we're talking about the main drags with the high wattage bulbs. The smaller wattages are streetlights. Which I think I heard Jimmy say that he's been changing a few that was out along, not very many, but when he could. Well, yeah, the one out here made a big difference.
All right, it's a big difference.
Yeah, sure did.
Plus, not to mention the savings.
Yeah.
No, that's long time too, right?
Oh, yeah.
It must take twenty, twenty-five years. Long time, it's forty, forty-seven years, yeah.
That's all I have.
Suzanne?
I have a reading of the resolution, let's see. City of Ava website, I'm sorry. We have been looking at redesigning our webpage and we've had a gentleman come through and put it up, like a site where we can look at what he's put on there. I did email you the aldermen to let you look at the, the website and see if you liked it, what we already have. And, you know, we've got some pictures of things that we've done around the city that kind of rotates up at the top, so, a different banner. We have a new tab that says city hall and we've got like pictures of mayor, alderman on that. And then we've also got a tab for city clerk where you can get your license applications. We can post agendas and minutes to where people who are on the internet can look at our agendas and see what's coming up on our council meetings. Just some different ideas there, what, Curtis will have a place where he can put ADA regulations and, and license for.
Permit applications, I actually have links to online versions of the codes we use so that citizens can look up to make sure they're doing things people.
What we, what we had, Nick Owen, reminds me of a chamber of commerce, which is what it really is, promotional thing you could see, but it's kind of a chamber of commerce-y looking thing, but the new one, they want, pictures were nice.
I looked the new website over and it, it looked nice. I would just have a question, you know, we talked about the mother pound, maybe posting visiting hours or, I was talking with some of them, they were wondering if whenever a dog is picked up, could it be posted on that website and?
On the front page over on the top right, we can put memos in there. So if we want to put a memo, we've got a dog or a cat at the city pound. Not quite so sure about a picture, but I know they can inquire about it there if we were to at least put a notice. Might be able to upload a picture.
Yeah. There was one flaw this morning at five thirty this morning and the weather, the weather was totally bogus for today's day at five thirty this morning. Parametric pressure, wind direction, speed, totally bogus. I don't know where they were getting that information at, but it was totally.
I, I don't think it pulled off their own video, I think it, I don't know.
You're right. No, that didn't come off my website. No, it, it showed parametric pressure of thirty-one inches and I mean, my gosh, it was thirty-one inches, our eyeballs. Just a comment. Thank you, Art.
Mine agrees with yours most of that memo.
Thank you, Art. What do we? Anyway, it looked good. We need to prove that or?
Well, before we go ahead with it, I just wanted to make sure it was okay with everybody. That, that the total amount's four sixty-two for what he has done as far as programming and.
You can drive to there, we'll just change things this past.
We just need to give him the final word and then we can, he, he has shown three or four of us how to go in and, and post our stuff, that we would like to make changes if it's more complicated, he could call and he'll, he'll help us, so we can do that.
Everybody in agreement with that?
Um, the University of Missouri Douglas County Extension Council has respectfully requested the City of Ava to help donate funds in an amount of ten thousand for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen operating budget.
You're going to ask Peggy, did we budget that in for last year?
I did, I do have it in as a line item.
Line item, so we include it in?
Yeah.
I had an objection of that. I'm, I'm with you there.
Second?
I'll say.
I'll say.
On behalf of the University of Missouri Extension.
It'll cost you somewhere now.
In ten years, if you continue to do this, we'll get you a plaque like that.
I think we just, we don't have ten years left. It's a pretty expensive flag.
Okay, we have, and I'm sorry, we've had an email from Anthony Cormichael. Summerfest, the Chamber of Commerce was really hard last year to get Summerfest up and going. They had a committee and had people going to meetings for all your loans to try and figure out what they wanted to do and who was going to do what for Summerfest. Anthony has taken it amongst himself to get a charter number and separate from the Chamber of Commerce on Summerfest and they would like to continue being separate from the Chamber of Commerce. But he's requesting that we, we consider treating them like we did with Chamber, allowing them to use the upper and lower parks as long as he can show proof of insurance that they'll have that covered for people that are out on the park grounds. If, if we would continue to support Summerfest like we did with the Chamber of Commerce.
And what's the upper and lower park?
Well, that's what he asked.
He wanted to take it away from them.
They're going to be a standalone organization, so it's not going to be the Chamber organizing the Summerfest, you'll still have a group of people.
Was, was it that Judy decided that they didn't want to do that?
I don't know, she didn't really say why.
No.
Grinch that on.
I don't think she'd give it up if they, she didn't ask her.
It's kind of like our Coke salad days, a lot of people, you know, look forward to that and Summerfest is going to be like that, they'll carry it on every year. We just have a group of people that are organizing it instead of the Chamber organizing it.
Does the Chamber not want to do this or?
I, Judy didn't say, so I, I don't know.
Yeah, we need to talk to Judy. See if they can contract with us, we're not very, so.
At least be investigated, see if they can enter to a contract with us, because we do have a contract with the Chamber.
Wait. Wonder if, you know, we kind of have a separate deal with Fair Board. I think that. The grounds down there, I don't know if that's the same.
It just needs to be, we need to look at it.
The contract.
And what their legal authority is, if they're, you know, if they are a legal entity themselves. Chamber is.
Oh, I assume he's going to, they'll have to incorporate in something like that.
They, they have. They've got a nonprofit corporation and a charter number for that.
Oh, okay.
So they, they've gone out with the state and got it organized, they're just, and they will show proof of insurance, they just want us to, and we can get an agreement, maybe.
Let's be, let's be sure we're not stating on Judy's.
Yeah, for sure.
So we have one resolution for our LED lights. Resolution twenty fifteen zero one zero one. Resolution of the governing body of the City of Ava authorizing the participation in the energy loan program of the Missouri Department of Economic Development, Division of Energy and the execution of a loan agreement and promissory note to provide funds to finance the installation or construction of energy conserv, conservation measures, sorry. Such funds to be repaid from energy cost savings realized by the public entity as a result of implementation of such energy conservation measures.
Have a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Keith?
May I make a comments?
I have a, a quick comment. I'd like to maybe look into a, a, people calling for one call and then other comments about our recycling center and the condition of it, I guess, and I think maybe we probably ought to maybe visit with Mr. Brown. And I don't know, you're probably aware of what I'm talking about. Yeah, I've kind of learned a few times and that there's, I've had, you know, this past week had a call and then other comments about that and that's something we probably ought to visit with Jim about and see what we could possibly get, get done, so.
Try and come up with a more permanent solution.
Pardon?
Try and come up with a more permanent solution, but.
Yeah, yeah. Something, something does need to be taken care of there.
Well, we evidently have, have a lot of recycling stuff going through there because when, I'm hardly ever, occasionally I'm there when the bin's empty, but more times than not, it is so full that if I don't have my stuff in a bag, I can't get it in the bin. You just have to kind of throw it on top and I haven't seen any weekends where it's been laid out on the ground lately, but I have seen that, this stuff everywhere. A lot of staff going through there, it's good.
Yeah, it is. That's, that's, I didn't have any.
That's it.
That's all I had.
Are you, Cor, do I?
We have the December docket for approval.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
So I'll second it.
I'll say. And I'll make a motion to go into close.
I'll say.
I'll say.